Public observer. Hello to Mr. Presti in the audience.
We are recording.
Okay, wonderful. I move that we reconvene to regular workshop session at 7:30 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Linda, we do not need another roll call, correct?
Just a voice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I know, just kidding. At this time, everyone is invited to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And we may have a flag.
May we have a flag, Mr. Dr. Taylor?
We do. We do. Bring it up now.
Okay. In every heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag
Flag.
Of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God,
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And hello to Ms. Draper and Mr. Lannan. Hello. Nice to see you guys. Linda, are there any communications not mentioned in the agenda?
Not that I can remember, no.
Okay. I don't remember seeing any to the board as a whole. I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of the virtual regular public session meeting on March 19th, 2020, and the virtual.
Point of order?
Yes.
Point of order, where this is not a voting meeting.
Oh, you are correct. Excuse me. I thought I was going to make it through this one. All right. Did anybody have any corrections to the minutes that they would like to informally announce? No? All right, let Linda know, please, if any of you do. Student representatives, Andy and Stella, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, we do.
Wonderful, please, go ahead.
So at the high school, starting tomorrow, Mr. Lassiter is going to start his Zoom conference calls, but he calls them his fireside chat. So they're going to start tomorrow for the seniors and then follow the juniors and sophomores and the freshmen. Mr. Lassiter is looking forward to seeing and hearing from the student body and their concerns. So I guess this is in the mix, I guess, our class-wide meeting that we have, which used to be built into the schedule, so that's very nice of him. We're also starting Flexible Fridays, beginning this Friday. And it'll give students time to catch up on assignments and to email teachers or meet with them individually within Zoom to discuss any assignments. And additionally, additionally, no new assignments will be given on Fridays now. And there's also nothing at the middle school.
So at Bartle, parents and guardians were given a survey to Bartle families to receive important feedback about remote learning. A big thank you to Dr. Nikosia and the Technology Department for distributing the Chromebooks and the Internet to our grades three through five students in need. And all after-school activities such as Battle of the Bartle Book Club, Run for Fun, Chorus, Band Orchestra, Student Council, and Robotics will continue remotely. And at Irving, it continues to enhance remote learning through teacher read-alouds and virtual morning meetings. Even Ms. McNally and Dr. Taylor have joined in on the fun. We are having another virtual Spirit Week to engage the little kids at Irving. And Mrs. Gonzalez, the school counselor, is sending weekly activities and resources to assist parents during the stressful time. That is all.
Thank you so much. Andy? Andy, did you have a report for us?
Andy gave his report already.
We got it, we got it already in.
My. I'm so sorry, I'm having technology problems and I have to admit that I was not paying adequate attention as I tried to get my audio working. Dr. Taylor, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, I do. Before I begin, I have to praise both Stella and Andy for playing like this is just routine. Thank you. By the way, my colleagues around the county have been looking at our Board of Education and its meetings as a model that they would like to replicate as well. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, Anne, but we're one of the very few districts around that's actually trying to maintain some sense of normalcy during this time with our board meetings.
Well, many thanks to you, Christina and John, for getting that done. And apologies again to Andy for not being as adept with the technology, apparently.
All good. So I'd like to spend a couple of minutes giving you an update on the state of things regarding remote learning. Andy and Stella did a good job kicking things off. In the name of trying to maintain some normalcy, I thought I'd share some shots of how things have been playing out. You can see there, the photo in the center is a a shot of our central leadership team meeting a few weeks ago. We actually met this morning once again for about a half hour. This is the committee comprised of board members, leaders of our two negotiating bargaining units, collective bargaining units, me, and, and of course, Mark. And we met today again for a half hour just to check in and see how things were playing out. In the lower right corner is a shot of me and some of my superintendent student cabinet members who who hung with, hang, hung with me a couple of weeks ago for lunch. The shot on the very left is, is a look at all the Chromebooks that Dr. Nikosia and her tech team were able to break out of carts at Bartle and distribute to anybody grades three to five who needed a machine. We handed out over 20 machines over the course of two days. And we believe we had everybody up to speed now, grades three to 12. This week, besides Flexible Fridays, as Andy pointed out, we will be having our teachers engage kids in weekly video conferences between one and two conferences a week. The requirement is at least one. Regarding grades, by now, most of us know Mr. Lassiter sent a message out to parents, guardians, and students. And I know that Ms. Brady is going to follow with her own message about marking period for grading. Not going to get into the details, but I just want to be sure that everybody's aware that the, that the protocol is out there. And it was one that was developed after consult with principals and superintendents from around the county. Mr. Lassiter has his own roundtable of high school principals from Middlesex and I'm the president of my association, and we did talk quite a bit about how our schools were going to assess grades from now to June. Couple of miscellaneous points, I do want to make sure the board and the community watching this video understand the standardized tests for the rest of the year have been canceled. I'm learning more and more of colleges that are also now getting rid of the SAT or ACT requirement as part of their admissions policies for this next round of admissions. So for those who are currently seniors, sorry, I missed out on that boat. But it does seem like more and more colleges and universities are, are getting on that bandwagon. In the same vein, the Department of Education has exempted anybody in this class who did not meet the graduation requirements, which call for having received passing scores on either the NJ SLA as a high schooler, the PSAT, or the Accuplacer, or, and who would then need to complete a portfolio assessment are exempt completely from all of those requirements. So essentially, all I have to do, the class of 2020, is meet the expectation that we set forth as a school district for graduation. The Department of Education also has directed districts to modify its evaluation procedures for all personnel. Tenured teachers who have received at least a three out of a four, a four-point scale, on a four-point scale, a three or higher in 2018, 2019 will be exempt from all evaluation scores, even if they already have been evaluated this year, 2019, 2020. I believe all of our teachers have at least a 3.0. In essence, it's a 2.55 and up. The Department of Education does look at rounding up a 2.5 to rate somebody as being effective. You need to score at least a three or higher to be effective. A four means you're highly effective. Actually, a 3.55 means you're highly effective. All of our teachers meet that expectation who are tenured. Non-tenured teachers, however, will have the two evaluations that have been completed already. In some cases, we've actually completed three evaluations, but at the very least two, their scores will be averaged, they'll receive some of the evaluations, and then we'll submit the scores to the state. Every year, teachers are required to complete student growth objectives, AKA SGOs. That will not be the case this year. Still some clarification needed about professional development plans and all the hours that teachers have to give us. They're required to complete at least 25 hours a year of professional development work. We haven't gotten any directive on those two items yet from the state. We're waiting on that. The leaders, supervisors, principals, directors fall under the same umbrella as the tenured teachers and non-tenured teachers. There'll be no summit of evaluations for tenured leaders. I will, however, continue to write up summit evaluations and use the score that I've already given our non-tenured leadership team members for the one evaluation that I already completed on them. So that's the state of evaluations right now. Professional development continues. Here's the latest slate. As I pointed out to the Personnel Committee last two weeks ago, the, we find the, the same voracious continual learning teachers and support staff who come out for our workshops when they're alive are coming out for our virtual workshops. So I'm very appreciative of the efforts on the part of Michelle Rodriguez and Nicole Kropsky, who both have been working hard on the virtual PD activity options. Our meal distribution continues on Mondays and Wednesdays to any student who is in need of a meal. We have put the call out to all students, K-12, whether or not they qualify for subsidized meals, and if they need a meal, all they've got to do is come to Bartle from 8:30 to 10:30, or the parking lot beside Building 11 at the Cedar Lane Apartment Complex from 11 to 1. I also want to call out an organization that was put together by our borough called Cope. I understand that at least one of our board members, Anne Gallon, is a member of Cope. This is a volunteer outreach group that has been doing incredible work delivering medication, meals, groceries to people who can't leave their homes for whatever reason. In many cases, they might be the elderly who are most in danger of becoming victim to the virus. I've actually now reached out to Cope for assistance. They have been helping us deliver meals to at least four families in need, three of whom are homeless, they're displaced, and one who is a resident but, but can't leave her home. So that's what I have to share regarding the latest in remote planning work we're doing. Are there any questions from the board before I move forward and talk a little bit about ESSA monitoring?
Yes, I have a few questions, actually. Is that okay?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, thank you for that report, and, and it was really thorough. I had a lot of questions about like meals and students who qualified. So I was concerned about that. So thanks so much for that portion. Also, thanks for all the visuals, because I have no idea how these are being conducted, these classes. I'm imagining chaos. So classroom size, it made me think of that. You know, you have potentially like 30 students in a classroom. And then I saw a tweet from a little girl. Actually, her mother had said that she was watching her outside playing with the dog when she should have been on Zoom with her class. This is not in our district, by the way. And so she said, you know, hey, I thought you were supposed to be at class. And she was like, it's fine. I took a picture of myself looking very attentive and on Zoom. And so it's fine, like she never calls on me. And I thought, wow, that's a genius. She can just skip that grade. But I wondered if there were any difficulties like that happening. I know the kids must be restless. So that brought me to another question that I had about how gym classes are being run. Are the gym teachers giving assignments? Are they doing like Zoom classroom exercise classes? So those are my, my two questions for now, and I have others for later, but those were my two.
So I'll speak, and then if Andy and Stella want to chime in, they're welcome to do so. They can talk about their own experiences. I do know that Mr. Roy, for instance, our Bartle, one of our Bartle PD teachers, has been videotaping himself live, doing, for recorded live, doing exercises and then having his kids try to replicate those exercises. I'm not sure, however, if they're actually zooming live with kids on that weekly video conference, engaging them in exercises. It's a wonderful idea and something which I can follow up with you about. Stella, Andy, does that happen to get off with you guys?
Um, well, so Stella and I are both in that sort of gym requirement built by that class. We do meet regularly with the A D schedule. I know we do have like at-home assignments from the Team Pepp curriculum. So it's kind of from packet to Google Docs, actually. I know from just talking to a few people who do have gym classes, Mr. Kay is doing terms of sending out material and asking students to kind of log, I guess, their exercises, but I am not entirely sure about that. But also from other districts that I have friends in, the gym is pretty much one of the classes that's kind of always lack, lack, you know, virtual assistance with. And I think there also is a kind of, and I would preach this too, where, you know, this is a very difficult time for most students to even get a Zoom call academically. You know, what is the actual chance of getting kids to, in this time, you know, out there and exercising and, you know, taking part in that gym class when maybe they have four assignments due the next digitally, just a thought.
Andy, on the other hand, I see running every day, as I saw him run today, putting it about 10 to 15 miles a day.
Wow. Scott, or Michelle, I guess I can report that in the middle school and the high school for the regular gym classes, they are providing exercise assignments and some food nutrition journaling. And it's a nice mix. One of the teachers is doing alternating yoga and more aerobic stuff. They're not doing it live, but they are putting a lot of thought into it. I agree, it's, it's tough because a lot of kids are not going outside that much, you know. So you're in your apartment, you know, doing your.
I mean, it's got to be tough. That's why I thought, you know, it's amazing that they're running the classes.
Yeah.
Anyway, I can't imagine, it's very, they have to be very creative. But I know that my, my kids that they're doing their gym classes, they are getting together in Zoom groups, I guess, you know, doing similar things. But yeah, it's got to be really hard.
So did you have another question?
Yeah, I wanted to ask how the Wi-Fi situation is working with the students and the teachers. I know that not everyone is lucky enough to have unlimited access to the Internet and Wi-Fi. So, you know, I really would like for the board to petition the council and the mayor to talk about the, what is very clearly now, you know, a public utility necessity. It is not something that we can live without, because I am afraid to say that this is not the first time and this is not the last time that we'll have to be careful with, you know, keeping each other safe by distancing, so.
Michelle, that's a very good, it's a very good point. It appears we have, we have all of our, or at least all of whom we know, all of our grades three to 12 families up and running on, with Wi-Fi and laptops. It's going to be very hard for us to do a one-eighty and take that Wi-Fi back and take those computers back. Because I bet you many of those families who were in need prior and now have the essentials that you and I and other people around this room have are becoming dependent on it as well.
Yeah.
Scott, could you reiterate how it's provided? Is it something called LightPath that does not require students to have a modem and a router?
Correct. LightPath is leveraging all the cable company, and I believe AT&amp;T is involved as well, hotspots spread out around town, around the region by giving, by assigning certain Internet protocol IP addresses that either we have to add to the Chromebooks that we are providing our families, or we manually assist the people who need the Wi-Fi and have their own machines can input on their, in their own browsers, and that gives them that Wi-Fi access.
Who would have thought there was a technological solution that these companies could engage in if they really were motivated? And we appreciate it, of course.
It's incredible. I mean, there have, that's one of many different things that many people I know that have been advocating for these things. All of a sudden, they're possible. It's so cool.
By the way, Mark, you, you are a technologist. It's a little more complicated than just assigning IP numbers. The other thing we do, by the way, for those of you in the room who are in the know, is we have to actually get the, what is called a MAC address. It's a computer assigned, right, a specific device-assigned ID code. Provide that code to LightPath so they can register the machine as well. But back to your point, Michelle, it's all about money, right? It's all about money.
Always is, yeah.
Are we paying for LightPath? Is that a service that?
No.
I see. So in this case, actually, they did a good thing. I mean, perhaps it was, you know, tax exemptable or whatever, but I mean.
Out of the goodness of their heart.
With no thought about future customers. Whatever the motivation, we certainly appreciate it, and how nice to know that it was possible after all. To get our, our students without Wi-Fi hooked up.
It's wonderful.
Yep.
Thank you for figuring that out.
If there are silver linings, that's definitely one of them, right?
Yeah, yeah. That and the, the one-year break in standardized testing.
Amen.
Depending on your perspective on that. Scott, I had a couple of questions too. Could I?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Super quick add. SATs, I don't have a kid who's applying to college yet, so I'm, I'm clueless on the timeline. For colleges that are requiring SATs, when would students have taken it this year? Is it in the spring?
I know that the May and June administrations have been canceled. I have a junior who would have taken those class, those, those tests.
Okay.
They'll work on July and August. Most applications are due December, depending on whether kids are applying early admission, early decision, anywhere between November and February of 2021.
Okay.
So I guess there is a window still available for kids to take the SAT and use it as part of their application portfolio.
But no one in the country is taking them May and June. That's, that's good to know. So we're not falling behind by not helping our students with that. In terms of the possible, oh, go ahead.
Well, I'm not sure about the ACT. That I know is the case with the SAT.
I mean, should we find out? Do we normally offer? I'm not sort of remembering every year what we do. I know sometimes we're able to offer prep classes.
Yes, yes.
So what's up with that? What, when would we normally offer those? And are we able to do it? And can we find out about the ACT, whether it's happening?
Right now, I'll find out about the ACT for you. Right now is when we begin our classes, usually early April. A couple of weeks ago, Mrs. Asamoah reached out about canceling the program because the team center ran it, canceled it. I'll find out about the ACT for the board. Get back to you guys by email.
Thanks. And if the July administration happens, it would be great if we could put in place whatever we would normally put in place before that happens. Can you, can we find out about that too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure we can make that happen, absolutely.
Okay, good, 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 great. Second thing, I, have we gotten, I know we tried to broaden the food distribution to students who are not necessarily signed up for free and reduced lunch. Have we gotten any responses from students who are not previously registered for a free and reduced lunch?
I can find out. I know our numbers remain the same. We average between 40 and 50 distributions a period, Monday and Wednesday. But I'll find out for you.
We didn't have a jump after that announcement? After that announcement that they were open to other people, there was no jump in the number of families?
No, I know. I didn't look at today's numbers.
I wonder if we need to, I wonder if we need to advertise the expanded criteria more publicly somehow? I don't know how.
Well, I could do it by Honeywell again. You know, Honeywells have gone out now, Chinese, Spanish, and English, and I can do it again to all families.
That might be helpful, Scott. I actually found a, one of the English ones, a tiny bit, maybe it was just me. Maybe I was having trouble with my audio again, but I found it was a little bit confusing about sort of who qualified to apply, so maybe we could just do it one more time.
Okay, okay.
If that was appropriate.
I'm due to send Honeywell out to families on Wednesday, so I can incorporate that in my message.
That'd be great. I'm surprised that, that nobody else has come forward and said like, I'm not signed up, but I could use the food, so. What else? I think some of our, in terms of chaos, Michelle, you mentioned during Zoom sessions. I mean, in my experience, I think teachers could probably use some ongoing training in how to, in classroom management during Zoom sessions. I know they're all doing like their best, and it's incredibly difficult to start a whole new way of, of teaching our children, especially our obstreperous children. But Scott, I think possibly, you know, continuing professional development would be good.
Yeah, I feel like that's, it's got to be a new challenge, considering that, you know, we've never had to have entire weeks of school remotely.
And I think some teachers could probably use more support with, you know, being able to mute people in the class and that sort of thing. Which is certainly can be pretty complicated. And we appreciate all our teachers for getting out there and doing all this. My goodness. All right, any other questions for Scott? Hi, Monique.
I do have another presentation to make.
Oh, I know, I know. Okay.
Okay, so I'll move on.
Let's do it, thanks.
So it is my statutory obligation to report to all of you the findings of a team that joined us, I think it was in February? No, December, back before break, to review how we are managing our funds, federal funds for Title I, II, III, and IV. We don't receive Title IV funds anymore, but we did. And most of those monies were used for technology. I'm pleased to report that there were no citations. So we passed. And as always, there are recommendations, or else I believe the monitoring team wouldn't have been doing its job if they couldn't find something to recommend. So I'm going to share with you rather quickly the findings and encourage you to look at the documents I shared in the Superintendent's Report folder in our Board Agenda folder for tonight's meeting. That also includes the action plan, which I'm not going to share with you tonight because it's pages long. The action plan that we put together to rectify some of the concerns that the team had. When I'm done presenting, I think there are 10 total, yeah, 10 total findings. When I'm done presenting, I'll share a couple of miscellaneous notes that Nicole Kropsky, who managed the team, wants me to share on her behalf. So first of all, one finding was that we didn't make as clear as the monitors would like us to have exactly how we identified those students who fit the category for services under the umbrella of Title I. The second finding was that we didn't actually share documentation on our website that identified what our programs are under the umbrella of Title I. By the way, that already has been rectified. We have a new, brand-new ESSA, the ESSA website set up on our webpage. You can find it under the Family Resources section of the website in each of our, on each of our school sites, as well as the main district page. The third finding was that we, we didn't do a good enough job sending letters to those parents and guardians of students who we did identify exactly why they were identified, but the entrance criteria was, and of course, but, but the exit criteria was. By exit criteria, what they're referring to is our notice to families when a student will have satisfied the academic expectations that we established that would have them exit out of Title I services. Now, remember, Title I applies not only to students who are in economically needy categories, but also to students who require academic remediation. So for instance, if my daughter, who's in high school, is struggling in particular subjects, she could qualify for certain Title I academic support. The fourth finding is that we did not provide on our website the policies we have in place for the ways that we engage parents and guardians in all of our programs regarding Title I schools. So some of those policies have been updated and placed on the website. Some of them are in the process of being reviewed by the Board Policy Committee, and we should have that wrapped up by, by summertime. The fifth finding is that we, while we did convene parent meetings with low attendance, we didn't provide enough evidence that we actually had these meetings to the monitors. So we're going to make amends. So we're going to make amends for that. Number six, sixth finding is that we didn't, it kind of follows up number five. We didn't share enough information about how we have engaged parents and families. And I'm going to speak to this point a little further when I read Nicole's notes in a few minutes. The seventh finding is that we didn't share the, we didn't have available and share with them the letter that we do send out to the students who don't speak English as a native language and require ESL services. So we'll, we'll rectify that and make sure we provide our letters, not only via snail mail, but also on our website so they're readily available to the entire district community. The eighth finding is that we didn't use our Title I funds for a particular bus appropriately. In some cases, we used funds, ESA funds, for things that we interpreted could be used for Title I use, but the monitoring team felt we couldn't use for that use. The ninth finding is that we didn't identify Didi Teacher as our point of contact for our homeless students on our website, even though we know that she's approved by the board to be that liaison. You know, number nine speaks to the trend in the findings. We didn't do a good enough job communicating this out to the district community. And one way to do that is to do it via the website. And the last finding, the 10th finding, is that we didn't show enough in the way of support that we provided the private schools, the non-public schools in our region, for which we are responsible to, to, to support not only with funds, but through services effectively enough. So with that, I'm going to stop the slideshow share and just read a couple of comments from Nicole, and then take your questions, if you have any. So just a few additional words. We, I do want to assure the board and the community that we have been, in fact, holding parent conferences, parent guardian conferences for Title I services. But unfortunately, we've struggled to get attendance. We've done them in the afternoon. We've done it at night. All told, throughout the year, we only had five individuals, five parents or guardians actually attend any of our meetings. Regarding the non-public services, we weren't aware that we had to provide opportunities for teachers and support staff at our private schools in the area professional development opportunities. So we're actually expected to invite non-publcs to our programs and all of our PD activities. So we are on our way to doing that now. And that's really all I have to report this, at this time. What I would again like you to make sure you do is go to the board folder, which I placed, hard to see, a document that looks like that. I guess you can now tell about my office. And, and then additional information about action steps we're going to take to rectify the, the recommendations. Any questions that I hope I can answer, and if I can't, I'll follow up and email the board.
And finding number nine, Scott?
Yeah.
And maybe Mark, you know, the answer to this. I don't remember if we, oh, there you are, Mark. I don't remember if we already amended our policy on the educational stability for children in foster care with the correct information. Do you know if we did that, Mark?
I believe we did.
We did already? Okay.
Number D on the policy. It's going to be going at first reading next week.
Oh, that's the one that's, okay, excellent.
And Nicole did confirm on a separate set of notes that she shared with me that that was revised, the policy.
Great, okay. Just couldn't remember. Okay, anyone?
That concludes my report then, if there are no other questions.
Okay, let's move on to our committee reports and items for review. Michelle, where are you? There you are. Curriculum and Instruction?
Yes. So we have kind of a long-term project in putting together something like a strategic plan specific to curriculum district-wide. So, you know, I've been kind of working on that, putting the, the structure for that together. But other than that, we did not have a committee meeting, you know, previous to this meeting. So what we have on the agenda here is really just item number two. And that's the resolution to approve the HIB incident report for the month of February of this year. So we did, you know, discuss most of these that enclosed session, I believe. But that's, that's all I have for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody have comments or questions? Do you have your next meeting scheduled, Michelle?
I believe that we do. I think it's the 23rd. I could be completely wrong.
Okay.
It's actually the 29th at Fort Lam.
Great, okay, okay. I imagine there's all kinds of interesting remote learning stuff that could be happening, maybe.
Quite unbelievable how staying at home all day is really, really busy.
That's true. Yeah, yeah, that's quite true. Okay, any other questions since I interjected? Sorry?
We'll have more for you later.
Excellent. Okay, finance and facilities. Mark, could you give your report, please?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Ann. So we met, we met at 5:30 this evening in a Zoom meeting. We discussed, primarily discussed the budget for next year. We, we've filled some gaps. We aren't 100% there yet, but we're going to meet next, next Monday before the first part of the board meeting, before the executive session. I believe it's 5:45, 5:30 or 5:45. We're going to meet again and go, I'm sorry?
5:45.
5:45, right. And so we're going to meet again next week and review a final budget. And I don't want to say more until then. I, I mean, we've gone over some things, but we'll have more details as the next weeks unfold. On this, number two is the usual bill lists. So there's the general bill list and the cafeteria bill list for these dates. There's a resolution to approve an out-of-district placement. This is a new student who recently moved in and is, is, we're going to start paying for their current placement. And that includes the placement at the school and a one-to-one aid for the student. Number four is a grant application, which we do every year. And this is, this year, we're getting $5,754.44 in the next fiscal year to use for safety, safety improvements, safety issues. And again, this is a standard kind of a, a grant that we're getting from the state, or NJ SIG. That's it.
Okay, any questions? Seeing, oh, go ahead. Chris, is that you?
Yeah, Mark, was there any more development about the Senate bill that we discussed or the state aid adjustment?
We, no, we haven't heard anything about state aid, and we, we discussed that very, very briefly. Linda was in the meeting with the other business administrators for the other districts. No one has heard anything about state aid at this point. As far as the bill in front of the Senate, there has been no action other than rumors coming down. But we do anticipate getting our aid from the borough. It won't be, it won't be the usual dates that we get it, but that's happened before. This is not unusual for us to not get the borough tax allotment. You know, they collect the money, we get it from them. It's not that unusual for us to have that slightly delayed, and will be delayed, but it will be in time to pay our bills. So I think the Senate or Assembly Bill's notwithstanding, we have had discussions with the borough, and they seem to be, you know, at this moment, they're positive.
Which we very much appreciate, obviously.
Very, very much appreciate. Yeah, we're all in the same boat in this situation, and they know it and we know it.
And I appreciate that Scott is in constant communication with the mayor, which is, it's a wonderful partnership. Thank you, Scott, for doing that. Other questions about finance? Nope. Okay, personnel, that's me. We did meet on April 6th. Talked about a number of confidential issues on the public agenda. We, sorry, in terms of public topics, we discussed. We're delighted that Ms. Brady has returned early to the middle school, and we're sorry to see the interim go, of course. But we're delighted that Ms. Brady back. Scott already addressed a number of issues around COVID, such as how many observations are going to have to be done? And that there will be a decrease in the number of evaluations per teacher, for the most part, as Scott discussed. Let's see. And that's about all we discussed at the meeting. That's sort of publicly discussable. What did I just do? Okay, on the agenda, agenda is pretty self-explanatory. We're sorry, number four, to see Fran Gartner go, and we wish her well. Caitlin Brady, we talked about, number seven, number eight. I'm not going to read through all these because they're pretty, they're pretty self-explanatory, and they're available to the public on the website. Number nine, there is one change in that table, line five. Lydic, comma, Catherine, the date should read April 3rd, 2020, rather than being blank. Oh, this is great. It looks like our, our teachers are doing a lot of remote education PD, which is wonderful. Thank you, teachers. Oh, including one on accommodating students with IEPs, 504s, ESL. Scott, will that, do you know, this is Amanda Yonks's scheduled PD on April 24th. Will that be given with an eye toward accommodating students with special needs remotely, presumably?
Yes, absolutely. That was her, she was tasked to do that. Yep.
That's wonderful.
If you follow her on Twitter, you can see some of the strategies that she'll be sharing with the teachers joining her workshop.
Oh, that's just great. Wow.
Look her up. She's an avid tweeter. Yeah.
Fantastic. Okay. And number 10 is a stipend for a paraprofessional. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns, or any personnel members want to add information to that?
And I have one comment. I, I want to give Linda a thumbs up. She did a wonderful job jumping on the need to replace a very pivotal position.
Yes.
And we did find a highly qualified candidate, who I had a chance to meet last week via Zoom. So thank you, you and the team. And I have to also pat Linda on the back for making it a collaborative effort. She had Marielle and Squazo and Janet Becker join her. Am I right?
Wonderful.
And if I can also commend them for taking time out of their spring break to hold these interviews, because we had to get it done as quickly as possible. And so they were willing to take, you know, to take some time out of their, you know, time off, so to speak. So I commend them for that.
Thanks, guys. That's wonderful. When will they be on the agenda, Scott?
I'm sorry, they'll be on the next Monday and I did agenda.
Okay.
She'll be on the next Monday and I did agenda. The person we'll be recommending is very experienced in the area of payroll and human resources.
Oh, fantastic. That's great to hear. Wonderful. All right, any more personnel matters? No, let's move on to policies with Mark.
Yes, thanks, Ann, again. So we met last week, I think, sometime.
Something like that, yeah.
These days are all rolling together, sadly. We went over, so we have a master list of policies. Some of them are policies that we have to do as an example for number D, Title I. That's because the ESA evaluators were here, and we had to make sure our policy was up to date, and it is now. Others are done because the law changes, and there is an important issue. An example of that is number B, disclosure and review of applicant's employment history. There was a, a law passed a year or two ago regarding applicants giving us their full history, so that we would know that they had various kinds of issues in other districts. And we wanted to get our, that's a mandatory policy, but it didn't have whole sections in it that were quite up to date. So we wanted to get that one done early, quickly. And then there's others, and we're going to be going through these as we have in the next few months, which are mandatory, but we didn't have them at all. The, the last one, it's, it's not the most important, perhaps, but giving out a varsity letters. I think it is important, and we didn't have a policy. And we now have a policy that says we'll give out varsity letters for students who make the varsity. And then there are others that we didn't have policies at all, which weren't mandatory. Oh, I, I believe the board member use of social networks was either completely out of date or was missing. And so we updated that to a, a model policy from Strauss Esme, which provides us with policy updates. So I think I've gone through all of them, but number C, that's the school-level parent and family engagement. And I think we had some incorrect wording in there, Scott, that you pointed out, and we've updated it to have the correct word. These are all pretty straightforward. So I would say if you have questions now, I can't get to my screen because we've gone full screen in the virtual meeting. It may be hard for me to answer, but if, certainly if you email me, I'm sure between myself and the other members of the committee, we could, we could answer. Oh, thanks. We could answer. But are there any questions, I guess?
I would just note that board members might want to look at letter A, the board member use of social networks. We tried to modify Strauss Esme's language a little bit. I think Strauss Esme wanted us to say that school board members could never, ever comment on social media about anything having to do with the schools. Pretty strict, and we tried to clarify that informational content was okay. Some people are asking like, where do I get my school lunch? A board member could say, oh, we talked about this at the last meeting. You get it at the, you know, whatever, building 11. But if anybody has comments about that, of course, send them to Mark.
Yeah, thanks, Ann. Thanks for clarifying.
But definitely no arguing about school-related stuff, as I think we all know. Any others? Is that Chris raising a hand? I can't see your hand. Oh. The shadowy movement in the night. All right. Equity and Excellence. Monique, do you have a report for us?
No, we met before, right before our last meeting. So we will meet again in May, early May. So no new updates at this point.
Cool. Thank you. All right, let's do public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Is there anyone present who would like to comment? I think we have two members of the audience. And I think both are experienced Zoom users, and so make yourselves known, please, if you'd like to comment. Give them a second to deal with the technology. All right, no public comment for now. President's report, I do not have a president's report. Is there any old business? New business? Anyone?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go for it.
So there were a couple of different things that I wanted to bring up in new business, just because they came to my attention, like, since the last meeting, and I wanted to share them with Scott especially, and any teachers that might be listening. The Highland Park Public Library's new director is doing a wonderful job on Instagram. I know for sure on Instagram, and she's got a daily, I shouldn't give all the credit to her. I'm sure that the entire staff is working really hard, but they've got so many resources available, and they're doing read-alouds and other things. So check, check them out. Also, this is all really great for parents at home, too, for kids of all ages. Also, there's a couple of different celebrities that have put their services to public use. And they're reading children's books online that you can stream, and that's a couple of different resources there. But one of them is called Save with Stories. And.
What's it called again, Michelle? I'm sorry.
Save, S-A-V- Save, S-A-V-E, with stories. And there's some high-profile celebrities that the kids might recognize from all kinds of different movies. And then, of course, Gender Spectrum has a daily resource, it changes every day, but they have movies that are streaming that students can view at home. They also have Read Alouds and other books that are available. But if you go on to, on to their website, it's genderspectrum.org, they have online events and other online resources for students of all kinds introducing, you know, gender inclusivity topics. So I know that the teachers have been given kind of, you know, an idea of what to do with the new gender-inclusive curriculum, but we did not anticipate that we would be doing all kinds of remote learning, and conversations might not include things that they would have in person. So I thought this was a really good resource, considering our pilot program there. And I had a question, actually, about the wonderful parade, the car teacher parade that was done for Irving students. I love that so much. I literally did shed tears of joy, seeing all of those cars and the kids across the street waving. That made me so happy. So all of those teachers, and Scott, yourself, and the dog, you brought joy to people all over town, it was wonderful. Are parades being scheduled for, oh, there's a picture, yay. Yeah, one of my neighbors had a little chalk drawing on the sidewalk that you might have missed, but it was, you know, all kinds of color on the sidewalk saying, we love Dr. Taylor and my future, it was great. So, yeah, so I was wondering if they were doing another parade, or if they, you know, had anything else planned that we could look out for, because I was, I was so happy to see that, and I wish I had more noticed, so that I could have, like, spread the word.
Well, I can certainly put the feeler out again, but, you know, I haven't heard anything through the grapevine so far.
I hope they had a good time, too.
I think it really boosted the whole town's morale. I mean, most of us, obviously, don't have Irving kids, but everybody was just, it was so great.
Yeah. Big shout-out to the police, too.
Yeah.
Brian O'Bara was just all in.
That's so cool.
That was really nice.
Yeah.
And can I just echo, it's Monique, oh, I guess I should raise my hand too late. If I can just echo that I wasn't aware of this at all, so I was actually working at the time, literally in the middle of teaching online, and I saw the police car and a couple cars, and I thought it was a funeral, until I actually saw, like, they were, so I didn't know what it was. But, yeah, if you do that again in the future, I would love to know, you know, in advance, for sure, because we'll be out there waving our sign. Literally, I was in a lesson at the time, so I couldn't go out there and holler with everyone else.
And I, also, to the Irving teachers, it's wonderful that they're providing materials to help parents at home. I mean, that's got to be really tough when you have a younger kid, and you're trying to work and homeschool for the first time, or sort of quasi homeschool, school at home. So many thanks to those teachers.
One of the greatest ways to follow what our teachers are doing in their efforts to go above and beyond is to check out Twitter. Nicole Stahl, I mentioned Yonks, they're really, they're going above and beyond, and so check them out on Twitter, what I do is search for their name, it should come up.
We really appreciate it, that's amazing for those Irving kids. That's really tough. Any other new business? Okay, it's time for public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Do any of our publicly present audience members want to say a few words?
Thank you, but no comment.
No comment at this time, Mr. Presti? Okay, moving along, I would like to adjourn the meeting, I moved to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? Is there a second to adjourn the, oh, thank you, Monique. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody, see you soon.
Good night.
Aye.
Bye.